All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Monday, December 11th. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58, Community Access Media, Channel 15. And it will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hoffman, if you'd read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I just want to alert the public that we'll be temporarily changing the start time of our meeting from 6:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. as an accommodation to our town administrator. And I believe, Mr. Fantasy, you have a statement you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to take a moment to make a statement regarding a personal situation that led to an earlier letter of my intent to resign in late March 2024. As my immediate family has been dealing with a critical medical situation for several months, I had come to the initial conclusion that it would not be fair to the Select Board or to the town to be out of the office periodically while my family navigates unknown waters in dealing with this medical situation. Since that time, some things have gotten better, yet so much more remains to be resolved. In that light, should things continue to progress in a positive fashion, I would consider withdrawing my intent to resign letter and continue on as your town administrator per the employment contract. Having said that, however, I do understand the Select Board's concern and desire to move ahead to engage a screening committee. Right now, without a final medical determination, even I myself do not know if it will become possible to stay on long term. That's in God's hands; it's not in my hands. However, I can assure each of you that I will continue to seek a determination sooner rather than later, so that the Board and my family can move on one way or the other. And I can also assure you that I will continue to give 100% to my duties as town administrator throughout my time in this position, as I not only owe that to each of you, but I owe it to myself, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy. All right. The first item, as always, is citizens' participation. However, I see no members of the public in our audience this evening, so we will move to our next item, which is a brief ARPA American Rescue Plan Act status update and presentation of an ARPA check from the Plymouth County Commissioners. We have Plymouth County Commissioner Jared Valenzola with us this evening, and Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien. Welcome back, gentlemen, as always.
Thank you.
We always appreciate you stopping in, especially when you bring us money.
I just thought that was a requirement.
Oh, yes, it is now. Do you want to start here?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the Board. As always, it's a pleasure to be back in Carver. We enjoy the amount of times that we've been able to come here, and that is a testament to Mr. Fantasy and the entire team that you have here. We've really been grateful for the partnership that we've been able to have with the town of Carver, with your finance team, your leadership team, and, of course, the five of you. These funds don't come without the hard work and effort and collaboration, and Carver has certainly been one of the model communities in terms of soliciting and utilizing these funds, so really, a lot of kudos, job well done, obviously, to everybody involved. We're really pleased again. You know, I talk often, and this is probably, I think, our second or third presentation, so I'm going to certainly shorten it, because I think, you know, some folks may have questions if so. But again, you know, some of the broad strokes, you know, right now, we're running this program at less than 1% administrative cost, and that is lower than the national average. That is a testament to Treasurer O'Brien, his staff, and the compliance team that we've put in place to be able to do that. The national average is 7% to 10%, just to put things in perspective. That's going to mean more money for Carver, more money for the 26 other member communities in the county. We give a charge, and none of this money's going to go back to Washington, so we will help you find ways to spend it. We will continue to find ways to spend it as well legally and within the confines of the law, which is perhaps the biggest advantage we're offering for this program, is when we give you this check, it's been processed, it's been vetted, we've done the legwork with your community, who's also done the legwork, to ensure it's vetted. The last thing I will add, I do send the regrets of my colleagues, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Handley, and we are grateful for our partnerships in the state legislature with Senator Pacheco and Representative Susan Williams Gifford, who are constantly on the horn to myself and to the treasurer and to our staff to make sure that Carver is receiving its fair share. So that is all from me for now, Mr. Chairman, and with your permission, I'll hand it to Treasurer O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzola.
Yes, certainly want to echo the sentiments of how much we appreciate working with the team, starting at the top and all the way down. Congressman Keating, Senator Markey, Senator Warren, staunch advocates for this money coming back to Massachusetts, advocates particularly for Plymouth County to utilize these monies so that our 27 communities could get those resources. But Commissioner Valenzola and I and Commissioner Handley, Commissioner Wright, we really value our partnerships and relationships with our state delegation. I might be a bit biased, having spent 10 years serving in the state legislature myself, but we're very fortunate to have Senator Pacheco, Representative Susan Williams Gifford here, because they appreciate not only what you folks do and how hard you work and how much you need these resources, but the partnerships that we have and that we are able to get these monies to you directly in a way that deals with the pandemic. Don't forget, the ARPA funds are still in response to the crisis that the country and the world faced in 2020 with the pandemic responding to public health, public safety concerns and issues. Carver has put together a broad team, and you have a great team here with Bob Fantasy and Elaine Weston and the other members of the team, recognizing that there's a lot that you need to do. And so we're here with two checks, not just one. We only have one big check, so we consolidate the amounts, but you're actually getting two banker's checks that can be deposited when I leave them with you, and they're for two vital projects that you folks have been working on. One is an HVAC system at Fire Station Number Three. It was an issue and has been for a while. They don't have a filtered air conditioning system. This will take care of that. That's $18,671.19. And then the second project is an HVAC upgrade at the EAMS station. Much needed, probably should have happened a little bit earlier, but you folks said, let's make sure we use these resources now, and that's for $14,347.91. And so, as Commissioner Valenzola mentioned, we run it through a vigorous process. We hope it's not too hard to get through, but we try to respond and be available to you folks to answer questions. It's been vetted, and when you get these checks, you know two things. One, the money's good, and two, no audit issues will arise. I did just want to mention, you may be reading things in the paper, I saw an article in a national publication not that long ago about audit questions in other parts of the country with use of these funds, and there have been some issues of fraud, mostly in other parts of the country. But you may even remember in Massachusetts, there was a question of the use of $2.5 billion may not have been used appropriately. It is not lost on me that here in Plymouth County, for our 27 communities, we haven't had a single problem. Not one dollar, not one penny has been reviewed as inappropriately spent, and that's just a real team effort. The Commissioners have always challenged me to make sure we have the best and the brightest available to make sure that is the case. But while other parts of the country, other parts of the state are struggling, here in Plymouth County, the monies are going out, being used appropriately, and that's just, I think, a real value add to the communities we represent.
And if I could just say, I think it's a real tribute to the vetting process that you folks put together, because that has been a real, I think, positive to all the cities and towns, that once we get a project approved, we know we don't have to worry about possibly having to pay that money back later, which is something I don't want to do.
Well, and it takes on staff resources, too, because then we're responsible for all the auditing of those monies with the U.S. Treasury. And to that point, we were able to bring in Barnstable, Bristol, and Norfolk County as well. They've modeled their program after our program. We're sharing resources, which is driving down that cost, which means more money to you, and the Commissioner alluded to that point, because we're driving down our administrative costs. So the program has been a big success. We have another year left in the program. All monies need to be obligated by June 30th of 2024, obligated, and spent by December 31st, 2024, although there's room to spend on big capital projects through December 31st, 2026. But we'll be in communication with you probably a little more frequently in 2024 to make sure all those monies come out. Carver should be pleased to know that you have enough applications in the queue to use more than the money that's allocated for you. So I know it's not going to be an issue here in Carver, getting all the money that's been allocated through this program, but we continue to look forward to working with you and just really thank you for the hard work of your team and the support. We really do enjoy coming to the town of Carver. When Commissioner Valenzola and I and the other Commissioners see it on the agenda, we're like, oh, we always feel welcome here. So thank you very much for your use of the program and welcoming us, and we'd love to do a picture, but I know there may be some questions or other thoughts, and we want to make sure we answer those if necessary or possible.
Yeah, I just, last time you folks were here, we had a really tight agenda, so there wasn't really time for questions, so I just wanted to make sure there was something on our agenda this evening, if Board members did have. So if you have a minute, we'll just take some questions, then we'll take our photo. Would that work for you folks?
Works for me.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Ryan? No?
Good. Just say thank you very much for being here.
All right.
We really appreciate the fact that we are a model county. That's amazing.
That's great.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, well, what was really rewarding was the fact that in Seattle, Washington, and in parts of Oregon, they actually are using the exact same platform that we created here, the website that I know your team goes on, and it's identical in other parts of the country. So we've modeled not just around here, but all across the United States. It's worked out very well. So, and that's a tribute to the Commissioners, who have really said, let's make sure we're on the cutting edge, and have given me whatever resources I need other than more hours in the day, which I don't think they can do, but
We'll try.
But other than that, no, we've been pleased, and thank you. Thanks for recognizing that.
I guess I do have one question. You mentioned all funds have to be allocated by June of 2024. So in the unlikely event that a project comes in under budget, does that mean you would forfeit that money?
So that is one of the challenges we have and why we're really going to be staying on top of this. The short answer is, if we know before June 30th, we can reallocate that money.
Okay.
Quite candidly, if we know by September, we can reallocate that money. At that point, it becomes a bit difficult to reallocate that money, so we're really asking our communities, and most of them are doing this, to really, you know, identify to the penny how much this project is going to cost.
Okay.
You know, early on, we have some instances, and in fact, I'm dealing with one in another community where it was a big, huge sewer project, and all they could do was estimate. And it came in at, you know, over a million dollars, it's not going to cost that much. So they're actually going to send money back to reallocate into the system, which we appreciate. So, as I mentioned, we're going to have some pretty regular Zoom meetings with administrators and managers and Treasurers to make sure they understand these timelines, but Carver's in great shape. Again, you have a lot of applications in. We're going to have to say no to a few of them, simply because there are more than we can handle, but that's a good approach, because that way you know if something falls by the wayside or even one of your projects doesn't work for you folks, there's still room for others to step in.
Well, our goal has been to leave no dollars unused, so.
Well, and I think, Mr. Chair, the advantage of the county being the administrators of these funds is, we're obviously local, we're elected, we share the same constituents. So if something like that were to happen, it's giving myself a call, the treasurer a call, and we'll work through that. And that's not a put-down of our friends at the state, but it's a big state, right? And you've got 351 communities that you're up against, including, obviously, the city of Boston and other communities, Plymouth County, where at your disposal, where your neighbors, we've been around, the Treasurer alluded to his time as a state rep, he represented Carver at one point as well, so I think that's the advantage, too, and I appreciate your comments, Ms. Hewens, because it's the truth, and we strive to be a model, and we strive to be the most effective and efficient operation we can be. But again, keeping that local connection and having that local resource, I think, is another advantage, and should a situation like that arise, like the Treasurer said, we're at your disposal to work with you to make that work out as well.
Yep.
Great, thank you. We appreciate it. Mr. Fantasy?
Yeah, I just want to say, I just compliment the county for working with us. We've had several meetings at the county offices to make sure we go over these projects before we submit them, so that we get the best chance of getting them approved, which has been very helpful. We now have 19 out of 28 projects that this Board approved in the works, either completed or being done now and ordered. So some are purchases, some are renovation of the Internet, they're starting the fiber line is going on now, so all these things are coming to fruition, and it's nice to see this extra money come in so that we can do these things. Otherwise, it'd end up on our capital plan down the road sometime. So, thank you.
All right. Anyone? Last chance. Everyone's good?
It's good.
All right. Why don't we take our photo?
Time for a picture.
Thank you. You are the first town I've seen the flag up.
I wish. I get serious. Picture.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Let me give you the actual checks.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much.
Come back anytime you want.
You're back.
Can I give them to you or? Okay, there's a weekend. Thank you. All right, Bob has the checks.
What checks?
You spelled my name wrong.
C-R-B-E-R.
Mustn't have a T-O-W-N in it.
Thanks, good night. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, the next item on our agenda is to set the date for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting and to set the deadline for the warrant and petition articles for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. So after looking at calendars and talking to various people involved, I would recommend that we set the date for Annual Town Meeting for April 9th at 6:30 p.m., and I'd recommend we set a date for the 2nd, if we need to continue the town meeting for April 11th at 6:30 p.m. Someone like to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
Yes. Well, this past year, it seems like we could have used a potential special town meeting within the annual, which Carver has done in the past, to take care of any financial things as we're getting towards the end of the year. So I just wanted to find if others thought that would make sense and if that could impact the time of the start, but in years past, there was usually a half hour or so dedicated to a special town meeting so that there could be warrant articles again to take care of any end-of-year financials that may need to happen.
Yeah, so normally, what you would do is set a special town meeting within the annual. So you open the annual town meeting, then adjourn that, go to the special town meeting. Once that's completed, adjourn that, and go back to the annual. So you can do that.
Okay.
We used to do it, we were done two or three times.
It's not necessary, per se, because a lot changed, where you can make these adjustments without a special town meeting.
Six to.
So, but there may be other things on there that we may want to do. You can always revoke that another time, if something's coming up where you want to set a special within the annual. Doesn't have to be done the same time.
Is there a time by which, a deadline?
Same thing, the, you know, so many days
Okay.
Before, 14 days.
So we could actually do that even as late as February or March, if we wanted to need it to, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And I did, just so everyone knows, I did speak with a moderator. He's good with those days, so. So we have a motion and a second to set the date for Annual Town Meeting for April 9th at 6:30 p.m., with a subsequent date, if we need a second night of town meeting for April 11th at 6:30 p.m. Anyone else have anything they want to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, it is unanimous, thank you. And I would recommend that we set the deadline for warrant and petition articles for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting for January 2nd at 4:00 p.m.
January 2nd.
Do you need to vote for that?
I think we do, yes. First, we have a motion, and a second discussion.
Does that give people enough time to have?
So usually, again, you would open, you would set a date to open the warrant. So if it's today, you'd open it today, and then set the closing of that day. So the motion should be to open the warrant on December 12th.
Okay, at 8:00 a.m.
Eight a.m.
And close the warrant at January 2nd at 4:00 p.m.?
What's the 2nd fall on? Is that a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, and Town Hall is open that day, so.
Just my, oh.
I'll amend my motion to open the warrant and petition articles to December 12th and the deadline of January 2nd at 4:00 p.m. for warrant and petition articles for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Exactly.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion.
So let's work backwards. If we're going to have town meeting on April 9th, and we close the warrant submission, the warrant on January 2nd, then that's when legal starts getting involved and starts reviewing all the items, and then we start having meetings, or are we having meetings before January 2nd?
Yeah, I mean, legal, as they come in, they're usually, they're looking at them at that point.
So what would the date be that we would have to be able to present to townspeople? Here's the warrant as it stands with all these warrant articles.
What's the date of that? When is that?
I mean, it's a second. So let's just say we want to have everything out to everybody 30 days before town meeting, so that's March 9th. So we're saying from January 2nd to March 9th, is that a realistic timeframe to say all the warrant articles have been vetted and correct and voted on?
So the budget, it has to be posted 30 days before, not the articles?
Yeah, I think it's 14 days.
Maybe we should have written it for people to look at, right?
We should do it as early as we can. I mean, sometimes, unfortunately, things get delayed, or they go back and forth with legal, but that's why we set the dates, so we can have time to work through these things.
I'm just questioning that span between, I guess, January 2nd, when we start going through this, to getting it out to people before town meeting so they can see it.
Yeah, I think it's plenty of time. Well, really, well, when you're, January 2nd, my only concern about January 2nd is that that's Christmas week.
Right.
And it ends on January 2nd, when they start coming back to work, and our department heads will be drafting these things, and then the planning board and all these others, they might need a little more time to do that.
Well, again, that's just the deadline to get them in.
I know.
Some of the departments will place a placeholder
Placeholder.
In for these things and get the wording in a little bit later, but I think that's how we've done it in the past. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we, department heads have put a placeholder in, and then they follow it up with the wording in a little bit. But if we don't start, we won't finish, so.
Would you want to give a couple of days after January 2nd? As you said, people will be coming back after a week. Would you want to make it like the 4th or something, just to give them?
See, that would be my suggestion.
Would be yours? Okay.
Again, only because Monday is a holiday.
Exactly.
And the 2nd is Tuesday.
How about Friday the 5th at 12:00 noon?
I think that sounds great if.
I mean, just a little bit.
You want to amend that?
Yeah.
If it's a petition article, then it needs to?
I would make it Thursday, maybe.
Thursday at 4:00?
Thursday?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Do we want to amend that motion once again?
I will amend that. I amend the motion.
To open, to continue, keep the open date of December 12th, but change the deadline date for January 4th?
Mm-hmm. Is it the 4th?
Are we doing it at 4 o'clock, Elaine? Is that best? Probably good.
Just, is that way if someone with a petition article came in, they'd have time to get it stamped in, copied, then we'd have time to get it to the clerk's office for them to get started on reviewing the signatures?
So what time would you suggest?
Just a little bit before closing time, whether it's 3:00, 3:30, just not right at.
3:00 on January 4th.
3:00, yeah, there you go.
We have an amended motion. Ms. Hewen, will you amend it?
Yes.
Second for that. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. All right. All right. The next item on our agenda is sort of a continuation of something we discussed at a couple of meetings previous, discussion of Select Board Town Administrator Goals. One was the financial management policies and the budget process, and the other was the status of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. I think the second might be a little quicker than the first, so, Mr. Fantasy, if you could just give us a status of the Open Space and Recreation Plan?
Okay, so today, we met with SERPED Planning Group, Tom Bott, myself, Sarah was there, Dave and John Woods from O&M, and went over what's needed to finalize the Open Space Plan. Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit about it, since that was your kind of?
Yes, thank you, yes. Also, Jen was there from the planning department. So we have just a few things to get finished in this plan. One of the reasons the cities and towns want to get their Open Space Recreation Plans updated soon is because without them, you can't get state funding to purchase properties for open space or recreation. So what we have left, it sounds like just the inventory of approximately 30 sites we have in town. Those inventories are largely done, a few need to be added and some updates, but then there's also the ADA assessment, which is going to be a little more complicated, and the O&M Department is going to help us with that. We have to check everything to make sure, just to say, is it ADA compliant or isn't it? And then SERPED is going to finish up the chapter on demographics. They'll probably be using 2020 data from 2020, and the goals and objectives section. We really have most of the plan done, it's just those two little gritty things, and we're hoping to get it finished by
January 31st.
January 31st.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. I didn't know if Mr. Bott wanted to add anything.
No, I think you captured it all.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any questions on that? All right. So the other item was the financial management policies and the budget process. Mr. Carter, I think this was you that requested this on the agenda.
Well, I think it was when we went over the, some of the objectives, we focused on one of the goals or needs of improvement had to do with the budget process for 2024. And I guess right now, things are kind of up in the air, right? We don't have a lot of information, we're behind in the budget schedule, the Finance Director even really hurt us, so I think we really can't, you know, put a comment as to how well this is going just yet.
Okay. Mr. Fantasy, do you have an update on that?
I do. You want me to send my update? Do you want to do it now?
It might be more helpful to do it during this whole discussion. Mr. Ryan, did you have something?
That's fine.
So the draft budget has been prepared, and upon the interim Finance Director's return tomorrow, he wasn't in today, I wasn't in on Friday, so we're trying to finalize all the numbers.
The finance director even really hurt us, so I think we really can't, you know, put a, put a comment as to how well this is going just yet.
Mr. Fantasy, do you have an update on that?
I do, you want me to send my update? Do you want to do it now, or you want to?
It might be, might be more helpful to do it during this whole discussion. Mr. Ryan, did you have something?
That's, that's fine.
So the draft budget has been prepared, and upon the interim finance director's return tomorrow, he wasn't in today, I wasn't in on Friday, so we're trying to finalize all the numbers. The draft we cleaned up and fine tuned, and then we'll get it out to the finance committee. You may have a copy. John?
I've got a, I've got a copy of the.
Draft 1 as we.
Yeah, department expenses but no revenue.
Yep, yep. So although due to a change of finance directors, going from a full-time, part-time position along with my family medical issues, the budget's in good shape for fiscal '25, fiscal year '25. The, if we get it out tomorrow, it's really just eight working days later than what the target date was, and given that we have a part-time finance director now instead of a full-time, we, you know, again, my situation and some other things that were going on. So it's, it's been a struggle, John, and John knows and Dan knows, we put together that, that group that we meet once in a while and go over these things. So we're plotting, plotting along and hope to get it out tomorrow, once we go over everything. So, we don't have the school budget yet, we have all the departments and, and just, you know, some of the, some just didn't come out right, so we're kind of cleaning that up.
So when do you think that you'll be able to hand to us, draft 1, final reviewed, blessed, even though they'll change, revenue and expenses altogether?
For FY '25.
For fiscal '25, yeah.
Again, I'm hoping tomorrow, the end of tomorrow, if he's in, so.
Mr. Ryan?
There were some open questions on, from our last meeting of verifying or finalizing some of the revenue numbers. Not sure if that's happened yet, or if you need our help to move that along.
Yeah, no, I think he's got it down.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah.
So if there's something available, we can review and then provide comments.
Yep, it's only a draft, again, it'll be the draft.
Correct.
The one that John has was, as we mentioned at that meeting, just have draft 1, so once this draft 2, we'll everybody dump draft 1 and don't keep going back to it.
I'm thinking, like, for example, the, the overlay reserve needs to come from the assessors. There is a draft number, but we probably need them to say, use this number.
Yeah, and, and they were looking at what the, what the number would be and what they should have pulled out for that, because there's a lot of abatement that's going through. So we have to hold that in abeyance, in case we lose every case, and we could, you know, by law you have to have that money available, so. So they're putting that together. I think they, I think George and Joe finally came to a final number.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else? All right, and I think we do have a date set for our Saturday budget meeting that we normally have over at the fire station. I believe the date is January 27th, am I correct, Ms. Weston?
So the finance committee is meeting tonight.
Okay.
And the chair will check and see if his committee is good with that.
Okay.
He does not foresee a problem.
Okay, so that is, that is the proposed date, January 27th.
And at what time?
Well, it starts early. What would you think, Mr. Fantasy, 9?
I think 9, yeah.
Okay. Okay, most likely 9 o'clock, we'll, we'll finalize that once the finance committee has their, has their vote.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Town Administrator update, Mr. Fantasy.
Oh. Okay, so Ward Street, so Ward Street, we finally got the, the final approval we needed from Conservation Commission, and once that was done, we got the contract with the, the contracting company, it's Lopes, and the town, they actually started working on the repair today. So that was an exciting thing, when the trucks pulled up and people saw that, it was already on Facebook, I'm sure, because there was pictures being taken and, you know. Coming into, looking at it, there's some issues that they have to address on the way they're going to manage the whole, the whole correction. It's, it's a little bigger than we initially thought that it would be. It opened up more, and there's some issues with, with the power lines that go out to the complex area, and obviously you don't want to break those, so, so, so it's on, it's, being worked on. Dave thought conservative estimate about four weeks to get it completed, give or take a week here or there, so. Another thing on that, we are, the public safety chiefs, myself and, and some other O&amp;M DPW, will be going again to the South Meadow Village to meet with all the residents and give an update. They like to hear it in person, which I understand that, instead of reading, you know, something on a website. So we, we did that last time, you were there last time, Chair, and it was great. I mean, we walked into a full room, and if you've been there, you know that's a huge room, and, and it was all a little disconcerting to walk in and think, uh-oh, you know, but they were great, they were good questions, they, they appreciated us going in there and talking to them and letting them know what was going on. And I think it helped ease their mind, especially in terms of public safety, because that's their concern, how do you get an ambulance there? How do you get police there when you need them, so?
I think it's nice to hear the, hear the information firsthand, too, because you know you're getting it direct from the, the right person, and so there's no misunderstanding in there, you, you get, you're very clear on what the answer is.
So. So that's on Thursday, Thursday at 4:30. And anybody from the board is welcome to attend, if you want to go, let me know. And the other update I had was on the North Carver Water District. On December 1st, the North Carver Water District switched over to the Middleborough Water Source again. This became necessary due to levels of manganese and iron in the North Carver Water District water. The switch over went relatively smooth, we thought. Town officials now, we're going to look at a more permanent solution, if we can find one, on taking care of the ongoing issues that, that has had over the past, you know, few years, so. So that's the goal, and everybody seems to be happy with the higher pressure and brighter looking water and clearer looking water that they're getting, so. So that's it for tonight.
All right.
Just a quick question, is there an update on the meter that?
I'm sorry, what?
The meter that was being put in place?
No, so that's the next step, they're, they're putting that out to bid, the town of Middleborough, so once we get the price, that'll be going through AWPer to pay for that. So we haven't, we haven't gotten a price yet, they're working on it.
No, and that was one of the reasons I asked that question to the, the county commissioners when they were here, is that, that price was very vague.
I know.
Until they get that engineering done, they really don't know what the price is going to be.
500,000.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Fantasy.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see, approval of licenses, we have none, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 40 hours in advance of the meeting, there are none. So select board announcements, Mr. Ryan?
If there's anything I can do to help with the budget process, please let me know. We'll send things our way, and we'll do what we can do to help it to go much smoother this year, so.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate, you know, what you did on that committee, too, the work you put into both you and John and, and others, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
No announcements.
All right, Ms. Ewens?
I just want to remind people to please remember Shane gives, gives thanks food pantry, as always.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yep, I want to echo what Sarah just said, that the, I know the junior class at the high school is collecting canned goods as well to donate to Shane, which Shane was a member of the junior class as well. And I wanted to congratulate the Carver football team, even though they didn't win the Super Bowl, made a great, just to get it to Gillette was quite an experience, and a great crowd there, we filled three full sections, so it's kind of exciting, and wish those that celebrate a happy Hanukkah.
All right, thank you. And I just wanted to remind everybody that the Select Board will be accepting letters of interest for the Town Administrator Screaming, Screening Committee until December 13th. That committee will be appointed at our next meeting, which will be on December 19th. So if you're interested, you still have a couple of days to get those letters of interest into the Select Board's office. And with that, this board will be in recess until 6:00 PM, when we'll get back together for our public hearing. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. And the next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing to consider exercising the town's right of first refusal for property currently being held under Chapter 61A map 8-21-1, 8-29-2, and a portion of 829. And so I'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Bott, would you like to start us off this evening?
Mr. Chair members of the board, I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planning here in Carver, Mass, and the information that I'm presenting on the screen is largely within the memo that the board received on November 26th. So on September 14th, the town received a notice of intent to convert 61A land, and that started this 120-day process for the town to exercise its right of refusal by January 12th, 2014. Sometimes these deadlines can be extended if there is a willing seller, but in this case, their deadline has not been extended, so we are working on January 14th as that date in order to execute our right of first refusal. Executing that right of refusal will require a special town meeting to authorize a purchase matching the $400,000 sales price, using existing and available community preservation affordable housing funds. There is a full chronology in the memorandum I provided, these are some of the target dates we had talked about the last time. Town Council has authorized a title search, we have authorized a Phase 1 ESA 21E search as well, those are the typical due diligence products that we do when looking at acquiring a piece of property. CPC application is being filed, I'm finishing it up tonight, obviously depending upon the board's vote, there'll be some additional information provided for that. Or if the board's vote is not in the affirmative, I won't be putting a whole lot more into the CPC application, but that's fine. I have coffee, we're ready to go. So we have anticipate seeing that Phase 1 assessment by December 15th. That was predicated on an earlier hearing date, so that's been pushed back a bit, but once again, we've started that process, we have our consultants on hand, they're Fasson O'Neil, who do reviews for the town on, on a pretty regular basis. We have a site visit scheduled with them tomorrow. We anticipate seeing those title search back, back from Town Council by December 22nd. And if we are going to have a special town meeting, it has to be posted, the deadline to post that special town meeting is the 25th, obviously it can be posted earlier, anticipating a January 8th, 2024 town meeting. So the property is, you know, 4.16 acres, about 3.26 of it is upland. I have asked our Conservation Administrator to put a finer note on that, noting the buffer areas that are available. So on this graphic that you have not seen before, at the back of the property, that shows the 100-foot buffer, at the bottom of the property, this is the 100-foot buffer line here. Over here is the 200-foot riverfront area. So from a conservation perspective, this is a developable site, and that accounts to 1.6 acres. Now I know that people have a perspective of what is a house on a lot, and when you look at, well, what can you put on 1.6 acres? You know, that varies depending upon the zoning you have and the type of housing that you're going to build. So back to our memorandum, I had put together some images to show, this is the, what the property looks like currently. Now, most of the maps that we've seen have got two lots on it, because a recent plan was filed showing three lots, these maps don't show up on most of the public record until this A&R plan is filed with the registry. So the two lots that were originally were here, coupled by this dotted line in here, and the back of the property extended right along to this dotted line, which is essentially the toe of the slope where an easement is on the property to access the cranberry boxes. Because the developer wanted to create three lots, they had to extend those lot lines, and those lot lines have been extended from where they were here previously out into the bog. So while the area of acreage is proper for developing something under conventional zoning, as one dwelling unit per acre, for the most part, this property that goes into the bogs isn't necessary for the purposes that we're looking at, nor do I think that it's a great idea for the town to own any more cranberry bogs than they do. All the development that we'd be looking at would be essentially on the area that was the original two lots. And what might be put on there, what is that sort of density look like? So I went and found some, some local, and local, I mean southeastern Massachusetts, some local examples. So this is from Red Brook Village, these are two-bedroom cottages. So these cottages that we see right here, where this, that's a Bronco, I can say proper brand names without endorsing them, so that's a, that's a Ford Bronco. So that's parked on the back, so this is the back, and this is the front of that same house. And all of that stuff sits right here in this corner on this little tiny square. So that is what this subdivision looks like. So this one piece of property right there has that cottage on it, so there are three here, there are three here on the other side of the street, the cottage is front on the open space, and they're loaded from the rear by a driveway, so people park in the back and drive in the front. So this is six units, those six units we just saw, with a roadway in it, and those six units with that roadway all fit on Lot 1. These six units with this roadway all fit on Lot 2. And my point is, is that when we look at the density that we're talking about, it is practical on the site without overcrowding things, because in this case, with the zoning they proposed there, they put six units on that one lot, we're looking at putting potentially six units on all three of those lots. Now, we don't really know what that unit count is, but we know by the constraints of the development, by talking with the, our, our health agent, by talking with our conservation agent, that essentially we're limited to about 12 bedrooms on the site. There may be 14 depending upon the nitrogen-reducing septic system that I have been talking about, because what is going to be built on the site, if the town doesn't exercise their right of refusal, will be three single-family units, three-bedroom detached with conventional septic systems, and built, by the way, by a, a very good builder who I've known for a very long time, and we've had a couple of conversations about this, and we've always been very cordial, and I think we'll be cordial again, but he's, I know that our designs are for housing, his designs are housing, but we're looking at trying to create housing that's more in line with the type of housing we're hoping to create in the town of Carver through the Housing Production Plan, rather than the default that we see all the time are three-bedroom, single-family units. Smaller units for empty nesters, smaller units for starting households have been identified as a need, and we see fewer of those in the marketplace, because markets, banks, builders are all comfortable with the product that they build, and it's been successful for them for a long time, so we don't see a lot of derivation for that. I'm not saying that we're going to build cottages that look like that, but for the purposes of scale and a potential, these are the things that are available and possible on the site. This is consistent with the master plan goals and the Housing Production Plan goals, as broadly defined, as I put it into my memo as well. And this shows the area with, on our GIS, that basically has all these attributes, let's see if we can make this a little bigger. So this is a GIS map of the site. Showing, these are the lots here, and these are the wetland areas at the back of the bog, here's the riverfront. This is town property to be owned across the street, this is another piece of town open space that sort of backs up towards the property. So in context, this shows the resources from an area of photography and where the lots are at. So what is before us today is, does the board have an, an interest in exercising that right of first refusal? And if so, the town planning staff would enter negotiations and discussions with the Department of Housing Community Development, formerly the Department of Housing Community Development, now the Executive Office of Livable Communities, to help us develop on RFP, to offer this to, to nonprofit developers, nonprofit developers such as Neighbored Housing Solutions, Community Action Development Grant, Habitat for Humanity, South Shore Housing, Neighbor Works, there are a number that are out there that do this, this type of work. How interested folks will be based on the scale and the type of housing, we'll see. There are, I don't want to give anybody the impression that this is a slam dunk and it's going to be easy to do, it's going to take work by the staff to work through this process, but at the end of the day, we get so few opportunities to find a piece of land like this. We've had a lot of conversations in offices and places about other 61A property that's come up. 61A is agricultural in, in nature, so if we see a 61A property is being offered, it oftentimes has many bogs on it, has wetland areas on it, it's typically acres and acres and acres, some of which could be useful, some of which may not be for, for, for the purposes of seeking them, whether they're for open space or for housing. So this presents a unique opportunity of. So this presents a unique opportunity of having three parcels right on a roadway. Typically, if you're going to build housing, you have to create a roadway, and that is the majority of the expense in developing housing. You've got to put a cul-de-sac in, you've got to put a roadway in, you've got to put sidewalks and drainage and all those sort of things. These lots all have frontage on a way, so there really isn't anything other than a common driveway to access the sites that are necessary for, as far as, you know, the construction you would typically see in a development. These all have the right to be built because they have frontage on both Lakeview and on South Main Street. So what we're looking at doing is perhaps seizing the opportunity to exercise our right of first refusal. That still requires town meeting to have a vote on that, and then move forward the process to try to develop the housing, to try to develop the site for housing roughly six to 14-bedroom type, six to 14 bedrooms. What configuration that would be is still up for debate, but I just wanted to give you an idea of the scale and the type. Originally, the first presentation I did and the first images I brought to you were for a manor house. This is like the house, that big gray house on Lakeview. I think I used the Council on Aging as another type of housing. In those, you can typically put multiple units in, but when you look at something on a larger scale, a house with multiple units in it, then we get into fire code issues, and we get into those things. We have to put in sprinklers and cisterns, and it just makes the development more complicated. And the fact that we are limited to those 12 to 14 bedrooms on the site made it much more apparent that that scale of housing isn't really what we need on the site. Maybe something more small and compact, and something that you would likely see in southeastern New England. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions the board has.
Mr. Corbo?
Mr. Chair, good night. Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Chair, good evening. My name is Greg Corbo, Town Council for the town of Carver. Yes, Mr. Bar, I was going to ask you to pull the A&R plan back up. And you had mentioned that the town was not interested in owning cranberry bogs. But can you clarify then what exactly it is that the town is buying here? Because my understanding is that these, all three of these lots extend into the existing cranberry bog. And that, so that upper portion that is labeled top bank of cranberry bog, right? The town's going to own all of that, correct?
Yeah, so we're going to own everything with our right of first refusal right to that line where my cursor is at. So here's the top of the bank, and this is essentially the line of the original two lots. So the purchase and sale includes the area that is in these cranberry bogs, these three lots. So that line extends all the way into the middle of the bog.
Okay. And so if the town were to purchase this property, then what becomes of the bog?
Well, we would own it, but I would love to convey it back to the people who are going to grow cranberries on it. I think that if you look at the potential for people owning a house with their own personal cranberry bog, it just seems a little, more than what you'd want for your yard duties. So I would look at conveying that back to ADG, the people who own the property. If they're actively harvesting it, and this easement line that you see across, this easement line will be included in the sale, so with whomever purchases it, will have to respect that easement. And that easement is for the cranberry growers to be able to access the bogs all the way around. So my take is, from the top of that bank, would be the parts that we would have an interest in keeping. And that portion of these other three lots in the cranberry bogs, we would look to convey back to the developer or someone else. But it seems to me, the original seller, but it seems to me the clearest, cleanest way would be to convey that back to them.
And if the town were to do that, to convey that portion of the land back, would the three lots closer to the road still be buildable?
Yes, because as I've talked about before, what we're looking at doing for this as far as the affordability and...
So what we're looking to do is work with DHCD on a local action unit, a LIP. So these are all techno words for a friendly 40B. So we would look at working with DHCD to do a friendly 40B on the site, to cite those potential six two-bedroom houses on the site. So we would not be using our conventional zoning. We wouldn't be using our conventional zoning setbacks. If we were using our conventional zoning, you'd put those three houses on it with a conventional septic system. But in the RFP, we're evaluating and looking at, we would ask for that nitrogen-reducing septic system, because we want housing, but we also want to do our best to protect the surrounding area from the effects of nitrogen. And that's the biggest issue with septic systems and the nitrogen loading that goes on with them.
And just one last question, Mr. Chair, through you. Is the proposal to build housing on all three of the front portions of the lot? I think it makes more sense if you leave it with the A&R plan. Yeah, so are you proposing that the town would build on all three of lots 1, 2, and 3?
Right. So conceivably, you may have one house that fronts on Lakeview here, and a few more that come around the corner. As we get into the river buffer, it bisects the remainder of Lot 3. So for the most part, the houses would be likely situated around the corner here at Lakeview into South Main, likely to, likely wholly on Lots 1 and Lots 2.
Okay, so then you wouldn't be building on Lot 3 at all?
We would own it, but because of the riverfront buffer areas, we wouldn't use it. There might be a well potentially on the site or something like that. But from the purposes of building, except those lots that I showed with those cottages on it are roughly 70 by 30. So 70 by 30 lot, even if we make those three times as big as they are, they're going to fit on the site. Well, two times as big as they are.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bar, I just have a couple of quick questions, and one of them, just for the purpose of everyone here and folks that may be watching at home, I think we discussed it at the last meeting as well, or maybe two meetings back, but how many bedrooms can we fit on this lot and not have to enact a public water supply? Is that 12? Is that the number? 12 is what Kevin had told me. I've heard 14 with the nitrogen-reducing septic system. And that's why I have kept this as conservative as possible by saying if it's 12 to 14, I'm calling it 12. So 12 bedrooms on the site, six two-bedroom houses for the simple purposes of math.
Okay. And to build the units that you're discussing, on the lots that you're discussing, can we do that with the existing town setbacks, or do we need to seek an exemption from those setbacks?
Well, that is what the LIP, L.A.U., the friendly 40B is all about. That gives us the permission to waive any of our setbacks as necessary. But unlike a 40B that's being foisted on us, imposed upon us, because we are the people who are doing the 40B, the town, we have those parameters in place to say, this is the building setback that we'd be working in. Typically, when you see something like that, you'd have the septic systems on the front along South Main Street, and the houses to the rear of that, just in order to make it easier for septic haulers and things like that to get to the sites. So we'd probably see the septic in the front, the houses in the back, and as I envisioned it, a rear-loaded driveway along this easement here, so people don't have to have six curb cuts along South Main Street, the property be accessed from Lakeview Street and from the other end of that private way that comes out here.
And would you anticipate one well for all the units, or would you anticipate multiple wells?
I've had a couple of conversations with Kevin Forgh about this, and he said there's a couple of different versions of it, but it may be one, three wells, it could be two wells, it could be one.
So we don't really know yet?
We don't really know that. Two wells seems to be most practical from our conversations, but I'm not that kind of person who cites wells. But based on the information I've gotten from people who do, he thinks likely two wells and likely a couple of septic systems. It comes back to the design.
But your feeling is, without knowing exactly what's going there, that for us to put the number of bedrooms that you're anticipating on the lot, that we would probably not be able to do it within the existing town setbacks? We'd have to vary from those setbacks, correct?
Correct, as far as the building goes. But as far as the conservation setbacks that Gary set for me, we'd be looking at working I hate it when I scroll past the thing I'm looking for and have to look at all my other ones. Yeah, so this is the graphic that Gary Flattery, our conservation agent, put for us. So we would be looking at putting those in here. So we would be within the conservation setbacks, but we wouldn't have the extensive front yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks that you typically see for a development.
All right, thank you. Questions on the board, Mr. Ryan?
I guess to the chairman's question, do we know all the waivers besides the setback that we would need to get? That's one, but are there other waivers? Do you know what they all are?
Setbacks in density. Because, you know, zoning requires, an RA lot is 60,000 square feet. And obviously, we're going to be putting more than, you know, more than a couple of units on that 60,000 square feet.
And the follow-on to that would be, what kind of precedence would the town be setting by doing that and, you know, going forward for, in the future, for other people that want to do the same?
Well, I think if somebody wants to build affordable housing, we should do our very best to work with them as much as we can. We have people, you know, we're working with Habitat right now on 11 Green Street as one unit. We may pick up a couple here, but if somebody comes in with a 40B, like we had seen previously, and I thought that we may see that again, you know, those people don't have to, there's no precedent from somebody foisting a 40B on you. That's the law. So in our cases, somebody said, yeah, we would love to build 100% housing to meet your housing needs. I'm willing to talk with them and look with them and work with them to see how we might go about that. Because, as you know, there's a housing crisis. Massachusetts legislature has determined that we need to build more housing around MBTA stations, and we'll be talking about MBTA zoning, you know, over the next year or so as well. But the precedent is, we need housing, and we're willing to work with anybody who's reasonable about creating it.
Any other members of the board? Ms. Jones?
So one of the things I wanted to make sure people understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but these, when we go out to, if we buy this and go out to bid, we would have control over what the units look like. Is that correct? I mean, they don't have to look like those units that you showed us.
I would not go so far as to say it's what they look like, but how they're situated. But obviously, if our RFP says the town seeks the development of six New England-style cottages for affordable housing with a nitrogen-reducing septic existing on this spot, I would not want to hamstring the marketplace with what they know to build. We certainly wouldn't want, you know, tall buildings. We wouldn't want, you know, terracotta. We wouldn't want stucco. We'd hope that they would be building with local resources and things that equate to that. So we're not going, we don't have a design guideline in place.
But couldn't we specify that we don't want them to look like, you know, army barracks or concrete, you know, blocks?
There's some charm to a Quonset hut, but no, I don't want to see Quonset huts. No.
So...
Yeah, I think that would be in general terms, a New England-style cottage. Like I said, we could say shingles, we could say porches, we could, those just add to the cost of the development. But obviously, the people who are building houses have a pretty good idea how to build houses and the things that they're looking at. But I wouldn't get into, you know, six over six lights for windows.
No, that's not what I meant. But, I mean, we could specify that it should fit in with other houses in the neighborhood.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Mr. Bar, just as a follow-up to Ms. Hewen's question, is when you say we could specify that they fit in, who specifically would specify that? Would it be the select board?
Well, we would put together on RFP, and that RFP, we would do, you know, one of the things that the people in my business do is we go find excellent models other places and steal them and make them work for us. So we'd be looking at some of those examples. But it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be out of the air to have, you know, certainly a working group look at those in-house. As we talked about before, the potential for creating at some point in the future an affordable housing group that might help with those sort of things as well.
So just, so I'm clear. Are you saying we don't have a group put together right now that would make those specifications? We'd put together a group?
We do not. We've had an Affordable Housing Trust on the books for a while, but I don't believe they met in...
Okay, and who would put together that group?
I believe the town administrator appoints all committees and things like that at Hock groups to be looking at. My idea would be to ask those people who have served on the Affordable Housing Trust previously if they had an interest in serving again, and if they did use that, those resources and that, the skill set that they brought, their familiarity with the town to benefit this project.
Okay. So nobody from the neighborhood or anything like that would sit on that? We wouldn't have one, I guess my question is, we wouldn't have one specific group for this property. We would have a more of a general group that would handle any type of these projects we would bring forward?
Yeah, I hadn't thought it to that point. But yeah, you'd have, you know, we're looking at making this generalizable to the town.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ryan?
Question is, have we identified other potential sites? So if we're looking at a plan for affordable housing and we're looking at our town, is there anything that's been identified to date that says, here's some good spots that we could use? I see some challenges with this site that we've been talking about, and we probably have limited funds to move forward. So with that, what's our plan for other sites?
Well, in the Housing Production Plan, there's a map that shows those areas of interest. One includes the, I think it's the Country Junction Shopping Center. So within six tenths of a mile from the Country Junction Shopping Center is this parcel. Another area that's identified for, as potential for affordable housing, is by, on the other end of Lakeview Street near the Council on Aging. That's six tenths a mile away. The thing about finding a site is the site has to be available. And since we've had this conversation, a Realtor who's actually working on this is handing me another listing, why don't you buy this one? Well, you know, we're not really real estate shoppers, more and more reactionary. So we know where we'd like to see things at, but those sites have to be available. And they have to be available for either developers to build on or for us to build on. And this is the opportunity that presents itself to us right now.
So I guess as a follow-on, there's no other opportunities right now for the town for other possible sites? This is it?
I have not called our property listings, but there are likely some other sites that may have some potential for housing.
Mr. Corbo?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Somewhat to that question, but related, is that the question before you is whether or not you wish to exercise your right of first refusal and purchase this property? If you do that, this is one example of a plan that this property could be used for, but it doesn't necessarily have to be used to further this particular plan. You could decide you want to put less housing units. You can decide you want to designate it as open space. And so, you know, while these are great questions and obviously legitimate questions, you know, you also want to think about what this property could be used for if you don't purchase it. And I don't know if you want to hear from the planner as to a little bit more detail about what might happen here if you don't purchase it.
Sure, and I think the planner has given us some insight into what he thinks might happen to that if we don't purchase it already, but, Mr. Bar?
Yeah, so the conversations I've had with the Open Space Committee were specifically about purchasing this property using CPA funds for housing. So if we were to purchase this property as designated right now, we'd be using CPA funds out of that housing account for housing. So we would not be available for open space unless there's some journal entering sort of thing that makes that happen. But I think that what we're leaning into is for housing, because the CPC has said, no, we're really interested in open space, as late as today, you know, from communicating with the CPC chairman, that we'd be looking at acquiring this with CPA funds. And one of the reasons that we have 400-plus thousand dollars in the CPA funds for affordable housing is towns struggle with what to do with that money in CPC for affordable housing. They have a very good idea what to do for open space. They have a very good idea what to do with historic preservation. But housing is one of those things that towns struggle with. In Kingston, when I was there, we gave $50,000 out of the CPA funds to Habitat for Humanity to help build a house on a lot. And that was, you know, magnanimous, but, you know, we gave 50 grand to one organization because the CPC really didn't know what to do. They wanted to kind of move the ball, because they have these funds that wind up there. So, you know, there's a number of things that have been identified in plans for how we might create housing through 40Bs, through other purposes, through foreclosures and things like that. We just haven't made much progress on those, because there hasn't been an opportunity where funding and land both lined up together.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Mr. Hawes?
I have a couple of quick questions. So...
So there's three lots that we're talking about and realistic, so if we buy all three, we're only going to use two lots, correct? For housing?
Correct. The other lots will be, you know, potentially areas for open space wells, things like that. So, because we've got, you know, those buffers that we just looked at, so we're probably not going to use much of Lot 3 for housing because of the riverfront areas, but it has an opportunity for perhaps a wellsite or something over there.
So I guess my question is, why are we purchasing three lots but not going to use all three?
Well, I think, in effect, we need all three in order to support the development that we're doing on site.
Okay.
Mr. Corvo?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The other answer to that question is, you have to. Your right of first refusal is to match the offer that was given, so the offer that's on the tables for all three lots, the only question you have here is, do you want to match that offer, yes or no? You don't get to say, sort of, you know, pick and choose, we want to purchase part of it, but not some other part of it.
So as a follow-up, so if we do not exercise our right of first refusal and then developer puts a project in, will they be using all three lots for homes? Have you, because something's been proposed, correct?
Yes, they will. And having a conversation, you'll likely hear from Mr. Gosens' team here shortly, they would be using all three lots. Bob has told me that Lot 3 is a little problematic, a little tight because of the Riverfront Protection Act. So Lot 3 is a little tougher to work with, but they'd be putting three houses on site.
And has, has the Conservation Committee looked at any of the, has it gotten that far?
Not to the Conservation Commission, but I've talked to the staff members, both with the health, a health agent for Kevin and Gary Flaherty over the Conservation Commission. He's the one who did that map up for me that showed the buffer areas.
So if, say if we do go through with this, can this still get denied by CONCOM or is this...
Well, I suppose that anything can be denied by CONSCOM. There could be a superseding order of conditions on all those things, but I think if someone draws lines in the sand and you stay inside of them, it's usually a pretty good formula for moving through the process and not being denied then.
Okay. And the only reason I'm asking is because obviously, we're up against a pretty strict timeline right here, and if that gets delayed after we approve to buy this and then Conservation, you know, holds it up for whatever, already, I just want to make, it just feels like we're backs up against the wall on this, which is my feeling.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Corvo.
Yeah, so to that question, right, you have to make a decision as to whether or not to buy the property, and then if you buy it, the permitting comes after the fact, right? So you're not going to necessarily have an approved project before having to make the decision as to whether or not to buy it.
And we also may find out through the vetting process that Town Council may come up with a title issue. Our 21E may come up with a contamination issue, and at that point, we wouldn't be proceeding. So as we move forward towards town meeting, and we're still gathering this information, particularly on the 21E, the Phase 1 environmental assessment or the title search, if something comes up in either one of those, we wouldn't be proceeding. We wouldn't want to buy the property. Someone had asked me earlier, well, are these, are these sites buildable? I'm like, well, I don't think that an experienced builder would be looking at buying them if they weren't buildable. I trust Bob.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Jones?
So I, to Mr. Hoffman's question, I think Mr. Bott showed us the picture that our Conservation Agent drew, and it showed the buffer lines, and the building would be outside, wouldn't be in the buffer areas at all. That's, he's got it up there on the screen. So what's buildable is apparently still buildable without, without going, getting variances from the Conservation Commission. Right, the only variances would possibly be on setbacks and density, isn't that what you said?
Correct. And as a, as a, as a local action unit, a friendly 40B, that permitting would be done through the Zoning Board of Appeals in conjunction with the Conservation Commission. So we'll be working with lots of folks to get to that point.
So one of the other questions, so when Sarah had mentioned about, can we, I don't want to say control, but suggest what type of buildings would go on there? So if we're, just for the people at home as well, and I know, kind of confused, so we would buy the property, if all, if everybody approved it, buy the property, and then we sell it, correct? The property?
Well, we would do a request for proposals to offer to the development community, various nonprofit developers, to see if they had an interest in it. And based, and they would buy it based on the parameters of the RFP. Minimum of 12 bedrooms, nitrogen-reducive septic system, New England-style development, two-bedroom units, those sort of things that they would look to comply with. So, so the more, the more stringent your requirements become with, you know, the type of development, whether it's parking underneath, those sort of things, it just makes it more complicated and more expensive for someone to build on it. So we would be asking for that broad concept. Give us 12 bedrooms of affordable housing that looks like Carver with a nitrogen-reduce septic system on the property that's available there.
So then the follow-up question, so when we say we find someone and they do purchase the property, where does that money go that we get from the sale?
I don't really have a good handle on that at this point, but I will say, and we've had a couple of conversations about what sort of funds might we recapture from that, that comes through the RFP process, but I do want to note that the reason that we have the CPA funds, that $420,000, $400,000 we're asking for, in my case, I actually added a 5% contingency for $420,000. The purpose of that is to, is to create affordable housing. So those monies don't come necessarily from the tax base. There is surcharge on our, on property taxes matched by the state, so that $400,000 would become specifically for that purpose. How much of that we recapture through this, I don't want to have a good number for you.
So, so I guess I'm confused. I thought when we talked before that if this is sold...
Yeah, if it was a straight flip, you go, yeah, here's 400, we're going to sell it to somebody, but, but depending on the nature of the developer, I don't know that the finances of other folks, but, you know, Habitat oftentimes has property donated to it or has a limited sale. We, on the RFP, we did on 11 Green Street, we had an RFP, and I think we made big dollars on that, but we're turning it over to somebody else who hopefully will create housing for it. So our goal is housing not profit on this site, and to the extent that we can recapture some of those funds, that'd be great, but I can't guarantee that we'll recapture the money that's 100% of the money that we're going to spend through CPC funds on that.
So if we capture any money, where does, where does that money go? Does it go back to CP?
General Revenue.
CPA fund?
No, General Revenue Fund, yeah. All the money, through taxes, through services, through sale, goes to the General Revenue Fund and then gets re-escalated through town meeting votes in the future.
So...
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair. It's not necessarily General Revenue Fund. There's a sale of real estate account, and a sale of real estate account, when you sell real estate, the proceeds from that can only be used for certain purposes. Paying off debt associated with the property is the primary purpose. You won't have that here, so then you could use it for either other real estate purchases or purchases of certain capital items, but it's not open-ended General Revenue Funds. They are somewhat restricted.
Okay. And I would assume that, so the CPC Committee would know that, that they're donating, or they're allocating $400,000, and if any money's recaptured from that, that doesn't go back to them?
Does not go back to them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoffman? Anyone else? Mr. Carter?
Couple of questions, starting off with the, you originally brought up the bogs, and I brought this up before. Do you have any information on the bogs as far as the yields barrels per acre?
I do not.
What they produce?
I have been told by the owners that they recently reworked the bogs in order to make them more efficient, but I don't have any particular numbers on that.
So they renovated their bogs, tried to increase their yields, but what, so I don't understand why we wouldn't keep the bogs, lease them to someone to run for us for some kind of small fee, and maybe take that money and throw it to an affordable housing account, let it grow year after year. I just don't know why we're so decided right off the bat to, you know, deed them back to the owner.
Well, I guess...
Was that the original deal? Do we have to follow the original deal, I guess?
No, and, and I look at it from a very extraordinary novice side of cranberry growing, is how do you grow half a cranberry bog? I can sort of understand how you grow half a field of alfalfa, because you could say, we're going to plow this part over here, but when you're, you know, the nature of cranberry bogs seems like it's very difficult to separate one bog into two bogs, based on how it is. But I don't have, you know, a reuse plan for cranberry bogs, only the fact that we don't need them for here, and it doesn't seem to me like housing and bogs are necessarily a good mix.
But we could change that if the vote, if the board voted, not deed them back. Is that, that's what the purpose?
Like I said, right now, it's, we buy everything and decide if we're going to buy everything or not.
Okay.
We don't get to parse part of the deal at this point.
So, so when I started just, and again, these are my numbers, not yours, so I'm just fooling around with, I looked at using each, say, unit at 1,250 square feet, between 1,500 roughly, for a two-bedroom unit. Typical build a cost right now at $250 a square foot. So if you take that cost and add to it $400,000 for the land, I used $100,000 for site costs, but if you're going to do a nitrogen-reducing system, you're going to, it's going to have a significant site cost. If you take that and just divide it by the number of units, you're getting a, if we're going to sell it, you're getting a sales price of, I don't know, 400, 450. Is that really considered affordable? So if we then eat the $400,000 towns putting in there and just say, forget it, we're not, we don't want that money back, then we're still looking at like a $350,000 sales price at break even or whatever the builder that we choose is going to use. So the question is, is these, they're not really affordable if we're going to sell them. Can we rent them or...
Well, first off, 400,000 is not an affordable price. And if you decide you want to rent affordable housing, then every year, you have to qualify that person who's in that unit. Do they qualify for that? If you sell an affordable unit, they have to qualify at closing, and they don't have to qualify again. There's a deed restrictions put on the property in that the property has to resell as an affordable unit. So the escalation you might see in the marketplace, you won't see on these units because there's a deed restriction on them. The only allows them to escalate to the point that they're affordable by the next buyer.
So in theory, these aren't, we can't sell these for the money to get our money back, and even selling them by eating the $400,000, it's still a sizable number. I guess what is an affordable price for affordable housing if you're going to sell to somebody?
I, I, I should have had that number before me, but essentially about $230,000 is what an affordable unit costs for a family of four. It'd be less for a two-bedroom.
I just don't know how we get there from, you know, unless, a lot of donating going on, I guess.
Well, in the case of some organizations that do this, such, and I don't want to speak for any organization, but there are people who use sweat equity in the developments to get to those points, they have additional funding sources. But in our case, I'm not an entrepreneur, nor is the town. We are not looking to, to, for a return on investment. We're looking at creating public good of affordable housing for people to live in Carver where they don't have one now.
Got it. And getting back to our housing production plan, how many of, let's just pretend this happened this year, and we're looking at six units. How many do we have so far for 2023?
Zero units.
Okay, zero. Okay, so we've got six. So, so I guess I'm, how we, how do we have a housing production plan that targets 23 or 45? Should that number, okay, 23, 45, the middle's 30, and that gets us over 10 years to our affordable housing needs for 40B for the state and things like that. But, but doing, doing these types of, you know, finding land over here, over here, over here, and doing two units, three units, whatever, for sizable monies, looks like it's 70, 80,000 a unit, you know, that'll bankrupt us. So, so should the affordable housing plan really be like 10 versus 23 to 45? Is that too aggressive?
Well, our affordable housing plan anticipated we would see production. So the housing production plan is both what type of housing we'd like to see and what type of production. And in 2010, 2015, we did an affordable housing plan. They anticipated there would be 40Bs that would arrive and create, I want to say 94 units of affordable housing. I didn't bring the housing plan up on the screen, but they anticipated that we would create units through the process, through the marketplace, by perhaps some, some, some resales, some renovations, some 40Bs, but there haven't been any 40Bs. I can tell you from a conversation that I had on Friday at a Planning Association meeting, we're likely to see some 40Bs, so you're likely to see some production because there's likely to be a 40B that's going to be filed with the town on a property you've seen before. And they told me that, you know, I suggested that, you know, we chat about that before they file it, but we'll see.
Sure.
But we're definitely, we could see some production on the 40B side of things, but it wouldn't be at this site. It would be at the other site, and it would be apartments, and apartments would be great because that's what they're proposing to do at that site. But the difficulty of vetting residents every year for affordable housing is not something that we are going to be able to do. That's why they would be for-sale units.
Okay.
I always talk about the magic of getting to 10%, and I always talk about, don't get too caught up in the magic, because when you get to 10%, it's a very large number. We've got 146 units right now, we're at 3.2%. If we get to 10% of our housing units, when the census changes and they count the new housing numbers, we have a new number. It is a great aspirational goal to get to 100%, but you typically don't get to 100% without some sort of large-scale development. In the town of Kingston, the 40R that we were looking at, that was going to produce 720 units by the train station, that would have got us to something like that. Some sort of MBTA-style development, which requires, you know, those densities the MBTA's looking at, those sort of developments are the things that get you to that number. We are going to keep plodding along and taking as many opportunities as we can as they come along to try to create as many units as we can. And that's the advice I give to everybody. Know what the math is, but, you know, build something, something that makes sense and something that works for your community.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the board before we move along? Okay, Mr. Bott, just before we move on to the next portion of the hearing, I just have a couple of follow-up questions. So I think, I think it was Mr. Hoffman's question, I could be wrong, but as far as the bogs and what happens to the bogs, or maybe it was yours, Mr. Carter, who decides, who makes that decision? Do we make that decision? Does the working group that we're talking about putting together, do they make that decision? Who makes the decision?
Well, we, the town of Carver, would own property, so to acquire or dispose of property, that requires a town meeting action.
Okay.
So if we were to decide to convey this property back to somebody else or to rent it to somebody else, that would typically be a product of town meeting to convey it.
So it'd be an article in town meeting?
If we were going to say, oh, we're going to farm this half of the bogs, then, you know, we talk to a farmer.
Okay, okay. And as far, as far as some of the discussion on what is affordable and the price that an affordable home is, who sets that price? Is it the state that sets the price?
Yeah, so that is a product of the Department of Housing Community Development and based on the median income for the Boston Metropolitan Statistical Area. So what is an affordable unit in Boston is the same cost as an affordable unit in Carver because we're in that Boston Metropolitan Statistical Area. The number they tend to use is 30% of your income is the maximum you can spend on housing. So if you're a family of four and you make that $100,000 a year, whatever it happens to be as that family of four, they look at 80% of that median income at $80,000, and what's 30% of that? So that's sort of the math that goes into figuring out what that number is.
But if we were to proceed, if we were to decide to move forward with this and we were to build two-bedroom units on this property, who decides what the selling price of those two-bedroom units is? Do we have any say in that, or is that just comes from the state guidelines?
Comes from the state.
Okay, and I guess finally, and I think we know the answer to this, but since today's December 11th, and we're talking about a town meeting or a possible town meeting on January 8th, I assume we wouldn't have any type of plan to bring to town meeting and say, this is what we want to build on this property. We'd have a plan that we want to build affordable housing, but I don't think we'd have a plan to show town meeting exactly what we wanted to build.
Yeah, and what I've tried to do with the graphics that I have here is just indicate what scale is like, because once again...
What we could do, but not what we will do.
Correct. Because that gets back to the RFP process, because we won't know what's going to be built and by whom until, until we own the property and we put it out as that RFP.
Okay, thanks.
I wouldn't want to give somebody the impression that, you know, we're building these storybook cottages when we need to build something different, but as far as scale But as far as scale and size, that's what the idea of these, the images that I put in my report are.
I understand. Before we move along, any more questions for Mr. Bott from the board? No, okay. Is the property owner here? Would the property owner like to say, would you like to say something, sir?
Yeah, I want to clarify.
Okay. If you could just step up to the microphone and just identify yourself for, for the record, please.
My name is Monty Safe. I'm from ADGA Realty LLC. I heard Mr. Council and Mr. Carter regarding the cranberry bog. I want to clarify what is the characteristic of the deal with Mr. Bob. We agreed to give him any, you know, he will buy the property and we give us an easement to keep the bogs as, as we keep farming it. So if the town decide to proceed and exercise the right, it's, it's going to be the same condition that we agreed with Mr. Bob, that the town will buy the property and will give us that easement and we keep the bogs and we keep farming it. I wanted to make it clear to everybody.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, so we have a, a few people that already signed a list saying they want to speak. If more people want to speak after that, we'll certainly allow that. I want to give everyone a chance, but I would ask you to try to keep your comments to three or four minutes so we can, we can move this along. Mr. Coslin?
Hi, everybody. I'm, well, I'm the one that has the property under agreement right now and I just wanted to clarify.
If you could just give us your address for the record?
19 Abbe Hills Drive, Kingston.
Okay.
In regards to your question, I just got through over the last couple of months working out construction costs, especially since COVID hit. And they're, they're right around $300 a square foot. I find it highly impossible for somebody to be able to do this project with the numbers that are, I just got through building all the houses on Yule Street and there was one lot left that I didn't buy from the developer that was supposed to be, look like, act like and be just like all the rest of the houses on the street. And it had to sell for three and a quarter. And he decided, I don't know what he's doing now, but he decided that he just can't afford to do it and he owns the lot. So the thought that you might get your money back from this project is just, in most, in 99% of the cases with affordable housing, the affordable units are when they can buy the property for enough so that they end up with a piece of property for nothing to put those units on. So I don't know how the dynamics would all work with this, but I just think it's going to be really tough for builders or developers, somebody to come in here or even a nonprofit and make this work at the numbers that are going to be required for that size of a unit. And as Monty just said, is that my agreement with them is that I own, that I'm buying part of the, the bogs, but I'm giving them an easement back to work them. So it's not like I'm-
Exclusive right easement.
There's, there's, there's no, there's no gray area there that it was, part of our agreement was my responsibility to have this subdivided. When it was brought to me, there was two lots there. I, I went to Mr. Bott and I explained to him what I was, wanted to do as far as area and subdividing it and doing everything. And we discussed all this before I knew this was even going to happen. So it's going to, it's, it's going to be tight to get three single-family, three-bedroom homes on that property. Never mind do, do that, but I guess anything is possible. So that's all I have to add.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Borden?
At Wood and Tenon Main Street, a couple of points to reiterate what Tom said. There's two separate sections of DEP that deal with, one deals with water supply, one deals with septic. Nitrogen-reducing system is not going to get us more bedrooms on this property. 12 bedrooms maximum unless we do a public water supply well, which I don't believe the town is interested in doing, given what we're going through with North Carver right now. Nitrogen-reducing system, they're great, but they're expensive to build, expensive to maintain, and why would you want to encumber a project like this with something of that expense? Makes no sense. As far as the buildings go, recent actions by, with Conservation Commission, they have been discouraging any permanent structures within 100-foot buffer, meaning that no houses, they're trying to keep driveways out of the buffer, the 65-foot buffer that comes with the bar, that's absolutely no touch, period. If they were to start waiving the 100-foot for a project like this, they would have to do it for every other developer that comes in front of them right now or there'd be hell to pay. We'd be playing favorites and they won't do that. I have a problem with us having to buy basically the land and the easement, that's, that's over an acre worth of land and at the price per acre, that's over $110,000 for land that we don't use, we can't use. These three lots, if they become buildable, that easement will be a part of their deed. Those homeowners will be responsible for the taxes on that property, including the taxes on that easement. So basically, the grower is getting over an acre worth of land free from taxes. There's a problem with that. I, like I said, $400,000 could be better spent, in my opinion, building some affordable housing, not paying premium price to buy a piece of property. Tom's point about using the flexibility to 40B setbacks. Drive down South Main Street and you look and see, other than a few that are just outside of South Meadow Road, most of the houses are well beyond 50-foot setback from South Meadow, from South Main Street. His proposal in the, using the 100-foot setback and stay out of it for conservation, those houses are going to be closer than 50 feet to the street. And they're going to stick out like a sore thumb and it's just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work. I mean, we, we need affordable housing. I don't dispute that whatsoever. This is not the right site and certainly not the right price to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Borden. Ms. Belmore?
Hi, I'm Amy Belmore. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. We're here in Carver and thank you for your time. I'll just try to take a couple of minutes. I really, I'm learning some information here tonight. I had a conversation with Mr. Bott earlier about this project and really just wanted to take a minute to say that we would be interested in learning more about this RFP as it is developed. We certainly would if it meets how we do our work and what we can come to the table with. We would likely be responsive to that RFP. We certainly have a housing crisis on our hands. We all know people who are moving out of the area, out of the state because there's nowhere to live affordably, including our young families, young adults and fixed-income seniors. And so what we do at Habitat every day is try to find solutions to that situation. And I think that this is a good opportunity. That being said, some of the issues that have been raised, you know, we would continue to go through the due diligence process to ensure that it was in fact buildable. To answer some of your questions, Habitat for Humanity serves a population of people making 30 to 60% AMI and we tend to hover around that 50 to 60% AMI. And so a couple of people had asked questions, for instance, about the sales price that are set by DHCD, now EOHLC, the state agency that sets those prices. And I can tell you right now, in 2023, the two-bedroom sales price at the 60% level is $180,800 for an affordable home at the 60% level. So we're working on one of those in Plymouth right now. And so what that means for, for Habitat is that we're able, because we're using volunteer labor for the lion's share of the labor on our homes, some of you have heard this from us before, but because we're using volunteer labor and we're soliciting discounts and getting pro bono services to support our work, we're able to deliver homes that are at 50 to 60% the cost compared to a for-profit builder. And so that's how we're able to turn around, sell these homes to low-income families or workforce housing families and ensure that they can in fact afford their mortgage. For Habitat, they are mortgage holders, 30 years with a deed restriction in perpetuity on the property. And they've put in their sweat equity hours, they've helped to build that home alongside our volunteers and they're getting that at a zero-equivalent mortgage. So I just wanted to raise those price points and with regards to the bog and so forth, that would be something that we wouldn't, Habitat would not be in any way interested in a cranberry bog in terms of being attached to the properties if we were to become involved in the development here. So we would be seeking that conversation with the town to convey it back to the bog owner. I come from a bog owner, a cranberry family years ago. I know what it takes to run cranberry bogs. I know what it looks like when they don't get run well and we would not be interested in that Habitat. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crane?
Hi, Doug Crane. I'm a Realtor.
Okay, Doug, your address?
416 Turnpike Street, Easton, Mass.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make a couple of points. One, we just made about the, that easement back to ADGA. But, you know, housing's important and I think, I think if the town really wants to grab hold of, of a 40B project, this just isn't the place to do it. It's a narrow strip of land, it's the gateway to Carver coming off 495. And as the, the other gentleman said, it's right front and center on the street. Make no mistake, when you have, you know, whether it be Habitat Neighborhood or what have you, they're going to look like row housing, okay? They don't do different designs, elements, they don't worry about these types of things. They have to build cost-effective housing and the only way to do that is what they call row housing. So that, that's what it looks like. And, and Tom put that picture up there. It'll look like those, but just longer because there'll be six of them. It's just not the place to do it. I think the town would be much wiser to engage a Realtor, maybe a local Realtor from the town who knows landowners like ADGA. ADGA just bought 120 acres off of Robbins. Engage them for an area of their land that would work good for a 40B project, where the numbers work, where you have all the time in the world to make the right decisions. You know, Monty did offer one off Indian Street already, but, but there's, you know, when you're talking about large landowners like this, I think it's good to have a Realtor engage them and, and, and search out a place for a good project like that. I think it's doable. This project still has to go through conservation. So you're essentially spending taxpayer money and Tom is relying on Bob to, you know, to gamble that money essentially. You know, he's, he's just saying, well, I think Bob's good at his job. Why would Bob buy it?
I think, let's keep our conversation just to the, to the property here.
All right. So, so anyways, that, that's, you know, that's my take on is I think the town could do a lot better price-wise, land-wise, location-wise if they just engaged a Realtor to, to help them find a place or ADGA directly.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crane.
Thank you.
All right, those are the only names I have on the, on the sign-up sheet previously. Are there other folks that would like to address the board this evening? Come on up, sir. Just your, your name and address, please, sir.
James Weston, 9 Lakeview Street, Carver, Mass.
Thank you.
I've done a lot of listening in this hearing so far and, boy, it's funny how the wetlands laws seem to disappear. When, I'm a cranberry grower or were, and for us to do anything, we had to get permits and this and that and the other and, boy, it seems like you're stretching things just to put housing in. And first thing, I want to ask Monty one thing, that you said that, that easement you're getting, so you're leaving the bog the way it is. So that's, that's a good thing and to cultivate a cranberry bog, you, you, you can't have people right up against it. Now those houses, the three houses would be fine, but to put all this other stuff in there and from what I can see with three houses, you, you talk about bedrooms, you're going to have nine bedrooms. So you said you want to go to 12. So you're only gaining three. And you're willing to spend $450,000 to, to gain four bedrooms, uh, three, uh, one building really, one house for low income? And all the houses in that area are valued somewhere around, I would say 400 to, one just sold on Indian Street for 850. And to turn around and put this here, you, as far as I can see, you get, you get well restrictions if you put in a, you even talked about it yourself. If you, you got setbacks from the street, I've already have had dealings with a lot that they move the stakes from one side to the other, from the road to the bog and back again, so they get the lot in. And so you get 100-foot buffer zone from the wetlands, you got 60-foot no-touch. Does all of that get waived for no, 40B housing? I guess that's one of my questions. Does that, does it?
I, I don't have the answer to that. Mr. Bott, do you have that answer?
Because we have rules for a reason. So under 40B, the regulations that the developer is required to follow are the state's regulations. So if you have a more restrictive setback for conservation than the state does, then they follow the state's. If you have a more restrictive, whatever it is in the states, then you follow the state's. The difference between a developer coming in and foisting a 40B on us and us doing one ourselves is we have the ability to work within those parameters to say, respect this line, respect that line versus just working with the state's lines.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bott.
So what are the state's regulations?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bott, could you just say that last part again into the mic so we can all hear you?
Yeah, so under 40B, 40B gives the ability, the developer the ability to override local regulations. So if you have a local conservation regulation that is more stringent than the state's regulation, the developer is not obliged to follow your local regulation. He will default to the state's minimums. And most towns have more stringent conservation regulations than the state does.
What are the state's minimums?
The next, next part of your statement was that if, if it's someone else doing the 40B, they get to override conservation, whereas if it's the town doing the 40B, we have more control.
Well, the town could override their own regulations as well.
Right, but we don't have to.
But that, that gets down to, you know, what we're looking at.
Right, so we could keep all the wetland buffers.
Yeah, so the thing that I tell developers on a very regular basis is if you don't know, understand your property, get yourself to a wetland scientist so you know what your buildable site is. So essentially that's what, what Gary did in his sketch to show, well, there's your developable site, that 1.6-acre strip along the front here. And to everyone's point, yes, the development would look different from the other things that are in town and in the state because that is why we have a crisis of affordable housing, because we create very large lots with very minor densities in order to house people on. And that hasn't worked because as Mark Twain once said, they're not building more land, we have the land that we have, so.
I really want to get, try to get this gentleman an answer to his question. Do we know what the state's regulations are?
I do not.
Okay.
Twenty, I think it's 25 feet.
Okay.
Well, I noticed you have an outline of the old bogs and not the bog as it is today. The whole bog is wetland, not just the way you have the old pieces.
Yeah, so these maps are based on what's mapped already by, by the assessor and by the state. So the new lots aren't on anybody's map yet because the A&R plan hasn't been filed with the registry.
And one other question for this hearing, with a butter is supposed to be notified by registered mail?
There's no notification for our butters for 61A hearing. There will be for our 40B.
Well, once you purchase it, I can pretty much guarantee what you're going to do with it. Now, we were told, I've heard rumors it's could be, going to be kept for open space if they purchase it, the town purchases it. Now, if, when will we know if they do purchase it, what, what's going to happen one way or another?
Well, what I've said is that we've met with the Community Preservation Committee and they said they wouldn't be attracted to this for open space. They would be willing to look at it for housing. I've said in every discussion we've had about purchasing the property for affordable housing. There's been no discussion about purchasing it for open space.
Remember that if we voted tonight to purchase it, we'd have to go to town meeting. we'd have to go to town meeting.
And one other question. I've lived in town my whole life, and I know there's a ton of land in North Carver that's been sitting there doing nothing. And there's no way you could put your affordable housing there because you could put all you could ever use. There's over 70, 100 acres of land in there. And you'd be right up to snuff, and you'd have whatever you want with no wetlands problems. Why would you try this, to the most part, for 12 bedrooms? You're willing to spend $450,000, the town money?
And again, the reason for this hearing is because the property is coming out of 61A. So that's why we're having this hearing tonight.
I used to own it. But I never dreamed that this would be happening. I mean, you guys, you talk all you want, cranberry bogs. Well, you better watch the growers because things aren't good. And I agree with the gentleman that was here earlier. You're going to set a precedent that you don't want to get into. And if you don't want lawsuits, because once you pass this, you've opened up a can of worms that all over town, when the growers get hurting. And they are now, and they're going to be hurting more because the price is going down. And if you open up a can of worms, I hate to think what's going to happen. But I'm not in favor of this. I'm in favor of the three houses that were supposed to be there and allowing them to run the cranberry bog the way it is. It seems like that's the best solution for everybody. I agree with that other gentleman. You can find better places and use your money a lot better than this setup. So I guess that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? All right. Before we close that part of the hearing and move on to deliberations among the board, I have one further question for you, Mr. Bott. So if the town was to vote to purchase this land and move forward with affordable housing, can that housing be given a local resident preference? What is the, can we specify that it's for Carver residents? Or can anyone from anywhere come in and give to that?
I'm going to defer that question to counsel, who's probably got a better answer for it. But typically, there can be a local preference if it's cited in your production plan. But when we advertise 40Bs, they're advertised regionally because it is a benefit to the community.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes, I agree with that answer.
So I'm not sure I'm clear on what the answer is. So if the town built 12 affordable units on that property, could those 12 affordable units go to Carver residents? Current Carver residents, or is that not possible?
My understanding is that, yes, you can create preference for Carver residents, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee that they will go to Carver residents.
Mr. Chair, I think there's someone else here who might help us. That's Ms. Bellmore from Habitat.
Sure.
So EOHLC sets a limit on how many can contain a preference. So you can have no more than 70% of units in a single project having a preference. So in the case of six units, six homes, you could have four. I think that comes out to, what, 4.2 or something like that? So you couldn't have more than four. So keep in mind, 70% is the max.
Okay, so maybe, Ms. Bellmore, maybe I have one follow-up question that maybe you could answer. So when we say a local preference, what exactly does a local preference mean? Does that mean that if Carver residents bid on the home and they meet the guidelines, they get the home?
Or? They would go into a lottery. So they have to be income-qualified. And there could be a geographic, I'd have to double-check, but there could be a geographic mileage around the locale of the site. So if, I'd just have to double-check whether it has to be contained to Carver or if it, you know, if that mileage kind of looped it into Plimpton at all or a surrounding town, I'd have to double-check. But in any case, you know, they have to be income-qualified for sure. Habitat has some different qualifications that people have to meet. But then, in the end, they go into a lottery and the winner...
So the Carver residents that apply go into a lottery? Or everybody goes into the same lottery?
There's actually, it's a layered, there's two different lotteries, to be honest. So if there's 70%, say you did choose to do four out of six buildings, if you put six homes on this site and four of them had a local preference, it's my understanding that there are two different lotteries. They each have to meet the income qualifications. There's very explicit, we, Habitat's never been in this situation, but I have read through the guidelines. There's just explicit directions that you have to follow about how that lottery is conducted.
Mr. Bott?
So much like the NBA draft, since we've done some sports analogies, they're weighted. You get more opportunities to select, but it is still a blind draw from the lottery. So that first person is pulled out. There are more opportunities for that Carver residence with that preference, but it's still a blind draw out of the lottery. So they rank those people based upon you qualified, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and those people have to proceed through to the end. Sometimes people fall off the list because they couldn't qualify for the loan after they received the lottery. They had an issue where they bought another house somewhere else. So there is that, but there's no guarantee that these houses will go to Carver residents.
So if, just, so I'm clear. Sorry to keep asking follow-up questions to this, but you build 12 units. Eight units get specified with a local preference. Okay, you have 10 folks from Carver that apply for those units, and they all meet the guidelines. They meet the income guidelines, they meet everything. That doesn't mean that eight of those 10 people will qualify, will get those homes.
They still got to be pulled out of the hat.
Still a blind.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Now I have my answer. Thank you, thank you both. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken already that would like to speak to the board before we move on?
Matt Sears, 18 Indian Street. So now we're just hearing this. You want to spend roughly $400,000 of my money, or not my money, the town's money and everybody who pays taxes, and people of Carver might not even benefit from it? That makes no sense to me. I don't understand why we would do this, especially with just 1.6 acres of land. When we're already having someone who's interested in building on the land who's going to put in possibly three houses, I just, I don't get that. That just, that math doesn't compute to me at all. I mean, that's the whole purpose of that fund, right?
Is to create affordable housing.
Right, but...
Not market-rate housing.
I know, but what I'm saying, everybody in Carver who pays taxes and puts money into that fund, now you're telling me people in Carver might not even benefit from it because it's a lottery.
Mr. Chair?
And I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to point out through the chair that once they move to Carver, then they're Carver residents.
I know, but I'm talking about the people that currently exist right now in the town. Like, I've lived here since 1999, and I've been paying into that fund. I technically couldn't even benefit from it. Or someone else who's lived here for five years and been paying into that fund might want to move into a house like that.
I think that's state law. I don't think...
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying then that from, for this project, this doesn't make any sense then, just for 1.16 acres. And also, the other thing is, just doing the quick math in my head, I don't understand how you get that built without having to put in a public water supply in. That's the other thing. And I don't know who's going to own that and who's going to manage all that and who's going to manage the septic system and all that other good stuff. Because then that just adds to the cost of living in the home because they're going to have to maintain it.
And you know, that's a good question, Mr. Bott. Who would manage the septic system?
I would venture to say homeowners association would do that. Much like any other, they're going to collect funds to upgrade the septic system to maintain it, plow the driveway and things like that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, again.
All right, thank you. All right. Sir, you've already had a chance to address the board. All right, I think we're ready to move on to deliberations among the board at this point. So would someone like to start? Does anyone have a motion?
Yeah, to get the discussion going, I'll make a motion that we exercise our right of first refusal on this property.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I don't hear a second. Is there a, is there a second, a Ms. Ewens' motion? Would someone like to make a motion not to exercise a right of first refusal?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes. So I understand this is a very unpopular spot. And I understand that affordable housing in general is unpopular. I get that. But I think that at some point, we have to do something. The last time we had the opportunity was with ARPA funds. We had Habitat in front of us to build some affordable housing. And one member of the board said that he would prefer we use CPA funds for affordable housing rather than ARPA. So here we are. We have the opportunity to use CPA funds, but we don't have the political will. I'm not quite sure what people are worried about here. Is it the view coming into Carver? Is it what the houses are going to look like? Is it the people who are going to live in them? What type of people are coming? If that's the case, I have a short story for you. When I was a child, there was a very short period of my life where myself, my mother, and my brother were homeless. And we lived in a YMCA in Philadelphia. And it was not fun, okay? But we were not bad people. I did not become a criminal. I grew up to be someone I like. And it really distresses me that we can't seem to do this. So that's really all I have to say. I think we should do more than ceremonial things as a board. I think we should actually start doing something.
The Chair.
I think we all want affordable housing in Carver. It just didn't feel like this was affordable to me. It felt like, for a lot of reasons, you know, the homeowner's situation, where they would have to have a homeowner association pay for the septic, pay taxes on land.
We have duplexes on Champs Court that have homeowner associations. We have conservation subdivisions that have homeowner associations.
And then the cost. It just didn't feel like we have a good plan in place to use this property. I think we had, there's opportunities for other property, and I agree with you, we should take action and do something. But I just didn't feel like it was affordable property to whoever was going to live there. It just seemed like it would be, there were too many complications and would cost too much in the end. And that's why I was not for it.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Mr. Carter?
My feeling more was, I guess, on the lines of what Dan was thinking. I think that, and again, looking at this housing plan, which I keep bringing up, that trying to find these small lots all over town to buy up and do something with just doesn't seem to be cost-effective with the town's money. Trying to find something where we incentivize a builder to put, I don't know, 20 units on the end of a development someplace that we can plan out, investing in that, and get a larger bang for our buck, you know, 20 units versus six or 12 with three units. So I'm all for, you know, I think we should really look at revising this affordable housing plan because we need to come up with something we all agree on because right now, we're just too disconnected, my thought.
If I may, Mr. Chair, make a short comment on that. So what you're suggesting is we put all the affordable in one big place somewhere out up in North Carver, wherever we can't see them, instead of sprinkling them around town and helping them blend into neighborhoods? Because I think the latter is what I would like if I needed an affordable home.
I would like to see them all over Carver, but as part of a larger scale, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't have a section of Carver. I think it should be all over Carver, a larger scale with developments. Yeah, I mean, I just think that would be more of a benefit to even the people that are buying it that they're in a nice, large community. That's my thoughts.
All right. Anyone else?
If I may, just one point to that. We're in the midst of updating our housing production plan right now through Serpide. And we'll have our first meeting with Serpide on January 9th with the planning board to talk about kicking off the process of updating the housing production plan. So if you're in the neighborhood?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Mr. Hoffman?
So I have two issues with this. The first one, when this was first presented or talked about in September, I think most people thought this was going to be for conservation purposes. Originally, we thought the property was going to be bought for that. We weren't going to touch the property. That was the initial thought. Then we hear about the housing and all the plans, the three houses. So there's a lot of confusion. Maybe, I know other people I talked about, because when this first came up for a discussion, that several residents told me, "Well, we have to buy it because we don't want anything going there. They've already stripped, you know, the lot cut, tree cut, all the trees there." So then we found this. So there's kind of a little bit of confusion on that end. The other part of the hearing, this presentation tonight, so we're going to buy three lots. We're only going to use two because one really can't be used. There's a cranberry bog on it, but we can't use that. So we're going to convey that back to the cranberry owner. And my personal feeling is just if we're going to buy a plot of land, let's use all of it. You know, I think maybe we can get more bang for our buck that way. I agree, we do need affordable housing. And that's been a priority for us for a while. Hopefully, we can have some other opportunities for some land we're talking, you know, in the future. But I just, this just doesn't, for me personally, I just don't think it's worth spending that amount of money for a piece of property that we can't fully utilize. That's...
All right. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second, not to exercise our right of first refusal on this property. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. It's four to one. So we will not be exercising our right of first refusal on this property. At this point, I'll, is it a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion of the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Before we adjourn the meeting, I did add, because the meetings, our meetings are starting earlier now. Is it accommodation to Mr. Fennessy? I did ask that we add a second round of citizens' participation to the end of our meetings to accommodate anyone who couldn't get here earlier at 5:00. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Any residents of Carver above something that hasn't been discussed previously? Anyone? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Area 58.